All right, good evening. I'm gonna call the public hearing to order. It's to discuss an ordinance vacate and closing a portion of Hester Drive in the city of Benton. At this time, is there anyone here to speak against it? I see no one. No one stepping up? Anyone wanna speak in favor of it? Please, if you do step to the mic, and I hope it's turned on, and state your name, and... Matt's coming. Matt's coming to help you. Pull it down for him.
Y'all just showing my technological inadequacies. The only thing new that we have is... Because apparently, we were gonna get some clapback at the last meeting. But, what, and I have not talked to anybody about this, but just to kind of alleviate that, and I'm gonna credit Erin Raspberry with this, he came up with this all on his own, and we're going to provide, should this pass, we will provide to the city, a right, uh, what do you call that, a cul-de-sac. And it'll just be a platted cul-de-sac, so that if anybody ever decides to build the remaining street, they'll have a place for services to turn around.
Any questions?
So you haven't had any contact with the lady that was here before, and so does she know anything about this? New proposal, or did...
No.
Please. Please, can we have a copy, 'cause I don't see it in this booklet. Very last page. Oh, there it is. We do have a copy. Last page of your booklet.
Hey, Robin?
Yes.
I assume this meets, the roundabout is big enough for the...
Yeah, Erin.
... tow and ambulance and fire, and we took it through D O C. It did come in smaller, Raspberry went back and made it bigger, and requested the fire, hit the fire code.
So are we good now? Okay, thank you.
Any other questions? Thank you. I'm gonna give one more opportunity to see if there's anyone here who would like to speak in opposition, but I honestly don't see anyone at this time. If there's no other questions, and no one else to speak, we'll adjourn this public hearing.
We don't allow, we don't allow fights in the county council chambers.
You ready, Mr. Hamm?
Yes, sir. At this time, being 5:06, I would like to call the Streets and Drainage Committee meeting of June 10th to order. And I will start with the recognition of attendees, starting on my far right.
Frank Baptist.
And Spencer Cole.
Uh, Farmer.
John Hart.
Hans.
And I'm Jeff Amm.
That's five, do we have a quorum?
Yes.
Okay.
Yes, sir.
We called it to order, we've got a quorum. I'll, it's, at this time, I'll make a motion to approve the minutes of the May 13th meeting. Motion's been, been made and seconded. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Fourth on the list is the ordinance, ordinance come before us for the Hester Street abandonment, southern portion, that will take place at the council meeting. Is there any discussion? From the council? Any from the public? Okay. Make a motion that we move forward with the ordinance for Hester Street abandonment, southern portion. Motion been made and seconded. The next on the agenda is gonna, oh, we need to vote on it, I'm sorry. All in favor, say aye. Opposed? Motion carries, thank you. Next on the list, resolution to apply for the S T B G grant. And that stands for Surface Transportation Block Grant for Design and Engineering for the North Shore Drive Project. Does anyone have any discussions in the council? From the public?
Chairman, I had a question, how much are we putting in here for? Do we know? See, it's eighty, twenty? So this is just for the design engineering, we'll come back and do construction later on?
Yes.
Got it.
Mr. Ritchie, would you like to say anything else? All right. Have a motion and a second? Do I have a second, did I hear a second? I thought the motion was made. I'm sorry. Okay, moving to, take a vote on, all in favor, aye. Opposed? Motion carries. Projects, projects, updates, Mr. Ritchie?
Would you inform them about our downtown, uh, reviving, uh, when it'll start, when it'll be done, at night, that kind of thing, so they'll be aware in case someone asks, please?
I've got it set up to, uh, to overlay the downtown area that's had the waterline replacement in, in some surrounding areas downtown, go ahead and do it all at once. That's to start tentatively right now, weather pending, June 22nd, that'll be after the Thursday, that Sunday night, they're gonna work at night, just so everyone knows, it shouldn't interfere with any businesses down there, they're gonna cut it off early in the morning, before six o'clock, and get out of the way, and then come back the next night, continue on until they get finished, so, um, that's where we are with that.
You don't, you don't project any future digging after we lay it, or I know we don't, you never know what's gonna happen, but...
Unless the water line breaks.
But we're not gonna do something and then have to go, I mean, this is all just the stuff you've already laid, that you're gonna be covering, or you're gonna be covering...
We're gonna do it the whole street. Like, right here, all the way, downtown.
Right, yeah.
We'll do severe, uh...
How far?
Next year's budget cycle, 'cause they're still doing severe now, and they hadn't tested any of that yet, or anything, on the waterline. So we're gonna go ahead and get this done, and then we'll just, they'll patch it back, and then as soon as it, my budget opens up for next year's overlay, I'll start, that'll be the first thing I do.
And I'm supposed to be through with the water line, go about the assembly.
Yeah. Yeah, we've been working at, uh, on Shoal Creek, on the flooding issues that we had right there on that road, and what we've done is put a dip in there, we, we've made a bigger throat at the road, and some side weirs to let the water that competes with the creek itself in the road, we'd let it off the road, instead of it backing up into people's driveways and stuff, uh, that's where a lot of the flooding occurs. And at the pond itself, I talked to Mr. Lindsey that owns the pond, and he's given us permission to, at the weir, to cut an opening in it, so that we can regulate it. We've got a contraption made, so that we can let the water down before a big event, and we'll, we'll monitor that, so... Yeah, so that'll be our expense.
I know I sent you an email about, uh, Mont Perry Sidewalk over by the school, that lady.
Yes.
Is there an update on that, or...
Yeah, I've also talked to Trevor too, today, about that same thing, and, um, it's still, as far as I know, there's a lot been happening, but I'm still planning on doing it this, this summer, if possible, or maybe tagged on to the end of what we're currently dealing with. Had a lot of stuff boil up on me, but, uh, still planning on doing it, just kind, just the exact way I explained it, that we would redo the sidewalk, and when we did the sidewalk, we would put in some drainage to kind of accommodate folks, to have a place to tie in a fresh drain if they needed to, 'cause that's all it is, is groundwater over there, so, yeah, right, I'll be here. Yes, sir. Yes, sir, uh, where I'm at with that is, uh, is I have McClellan and Taylor's here, if we need to get technical, but he has provided me with the easements to sign, the permanent drainage easements, that's gonna be for the drain that goes through the properties. He's got them to me, I got those as Friday, and I've been going through, collecting phone numbers and stuff, that I can call people, start setting up a meeting to get those signed off on, and then I get them back to him, and then he, um, behind the house. The street portion is another project, which is in the works also, that McClellan will help me handle with, uh, the...
Come on up, Taylor.
With the, uh, the signing of all those rightaways, that'll be a little, little different situation. And it's got a grant involved, so it's a little bit more technical. As soon as we get these signed for the back, backyard, we'll be going out as soon as we get that done.
Please do be a little bit more complicated, 'cause it's got several dollars in the grant, so everything being, going through ROD, so it'll have to be certified, it'll have its own environmental clearance, separate, it'll have to do phase three. So it will, phase three will actually end up happening before phase two. Phase two, we got sixty percent comments back from ROD about it, off the go, we've been working on those, we had some remarks back about, they wanted, uh, permanent rightaway for grass slopes. We prepared this to ease, property back, which is grass area, so we have kind of back and forth on that, that we're kind of dealing with, but then we'll go to ninety percent, uh, that's approved, then phase two easements, they have to be approved by ROD before they can be acquired, so... So phase two is the street, the one that's on the street, phase three is gonna finish up what goes in the backyards. It'll just be the north side. That's what they're, we wanted to put it on both sides, just due to the amount of rightaway, or that rightaway line actually is, we couldn't keep a consistent little sidewalk everywhere, so, just to kind of keep it, where it goes quicker and goes to ROD, I have to have more rightaway dedication and all that, we just put it... There'd be, there'd be, uh, street drainage as well, drainage improvements that will connect to the backyard drainage, phase one, so all that, system in the backyard, it's kind of already built, so probably able to do... Absolutely, if everything works out perfect, we'd like to get built under construction this year, but that just depends on the fact of the work with the regulatory agency.
What are the parameters on Cross Street, like where are we starting and stopping on this?
Phase one started at Olive Street, and it's worked its way up through the backyards of Cross Street, Summer Conway, part of Cross Street, uh, halfway up the block there, and then we stopped it there, and then phase three will take off in the backyards from there towards Short Street, and, and at that intersection of Short and Conway, that's where that phase will stop.
Where all the water comes to the curb.
Yeah.
Starts to go into the backyards, hopefully it all kind of goes up there, and we'll have several inlets in that particular intersection.
Yeah. And then phase two is Cross Street itself, from, uh, it's, uh, it's not, uh, not Olive, it's not quite to Olive, but...
It's a little bit further east.
It's a little further east from Olive, but it goes...
Basically, there's, if you, if you looked at it from the sky, there's a strip with no sidewalks.
Yeah.
And it kind of encompasses that, and goes a little bit outside, right, as well, after all that area. All the low spots, all the stuff, all the areas that doesn't have sidewalks, hopefully it connects all those things.
And there's, there's an additional phase to go into downtown, around the courthouse, where there's no drainage at all, to try to keep, keep it filled flooded, which things, when it gets to the top of the hill there, it'll be a lot smaller, a lot, you know, still...
It should get, yes, it should get smaller, if we go up the hill, it's, we started downstream, that's a phase one, there's a pass that's blocked forward, it kind of goes underneath the road, and runs along Olive, and that's kind of further, so it's already accounting for what we planned in phase four and five. So, but, as it goes down towards the courthouse, goes back up the hill, it'll have smaller structures, but the downstream will be larger, we've already accounted for that, what it's collecting on the way, but...
Or into, I guess, this big, I'm looking at the satellite here, like a big drainage area in between Conway and Cross, where's Cross is, right there, almost at Olive.
Yes, yeah, there's, you can kind of see a creek that leads Olive Street, uh, right at the intersection of Conway and Olive, where we went under with the old box, there's a creek that leads there, and that was kind of just our starting point. Started there, we did the box over, and now we're going upstream as we can, like, if we go...
Thank you.
Along this, along that same line, just, I know it's not a part of this project, but on the corner of Conway and Ashby, we talked about just finishing that curve on that side, will this be, can that be?
It's separate, but I, I got it.
One house on there, they're just, there's always people driving in, in the yard, and tearing it up, his yard, and he's playing a few times...
It's separate, but I do have it down with him.
Okay, all right, thank you.
Don, do you want to ask about Roundabout? Well, I can tell you, I probably have more information than you do. Baxter has reached out to Circupcase lawyers, uh, made an offer, now we're waiting to accept all. That's where we're at with that.
I know that, I think it was Friday, Baxter reached out, asked him to give some details, I guess everybody...
He answered some questions.
He answered some questions, and I made sure that we got an answer before we left for the day, but that was the last question. Forget that, and the city's name, there's just a form online, ROD website, which is right away certification, basically just says, uh, certify the city on the whole end of this project, and we'll fill that out for y'all, the authority to advertise.
Just waiting on them to accept the offer.
Any other questions or concern?
Thanks, Taylor.
Hearing none, do I have any other updates?
I would like to say that, uh, our storm debris pickup, that we've been working with, with the April storms and the May storm, we are real close to getting that wrapped up, it's, it's been a, it's been a, a big year for that, uh, one of the biggest ones, uh, as far as big trees falling, uh, and helping folks out, it's been quite huge for us to do that, so...
And we also want to thank the county for supplying us a place to haul that far, because we didn't have that spot, so we worked well with the county on that issue.
Mayor, uh, too, I'm sure we're working through the public assistance for that, to get reimbursed for anything that we had to do during that timeframe, right?
We have submitted all the paperwork, but I don't know that we're actually gonna get it. So that was an unexpected expense, and he has exact reasons for it, it cost us quite a bit, to pick up some stuff, so...
Along those lines, I would like to add to the council, and I know some of them aren't here, but in my meeting with the street department the other day, uh, it was brought to my attention that we should consider what's called a grabber truck, which is a large dump truck with a grabber tool on it, like you see in trees. And, and the, I think the count, or the city, the county had one, I don't know, but, uh, currently, we're using four or five people with inloaders and that equipment for this job, and John can correct me if I'm wrong, but it would reduce the number of people necessary for the cleanup work for these episodes, and save us manpower that we can put elsewhere. So that's just food for thought.
Chairman Hamm?
Yes, sir.
I agree with you totally, I think they need a grabber truck, uh, you know, John was talking about how busy, busy they are, every, people are finding out about it, and I know my neighbor across the street uses them almost every week, and I have my church ladies that, when I go to church, they give me the list of where I pick up stuff, that's pretty much a weekly deal, uh, so I know John stays really busy, and if he had a grabber truck, they can just go by and pick it up, set it in the back of the truck, and, and take off, and it'd reduce manpower down to maybe two men instead of five or six, but according to my church ladies, they do an excellent job on cleaning and sweeping, and they leave everything better than it was, so, uh, big kudos for you, 'cause you make these ladies happy, you've really done something. And you're a pristine...
Well, others, thank you, Mr. Donner, but other thing that was mentioned in that meeting, and it's gonna be a sore subject, but possibly in the future, putting a fee of some kind, five dollars for a pickup, or something like that, because we think that it would condense the number of trips to a facility or a house, an area, in order to pick up, they could take two or three weeks, weeks of stuff and put it in front of the yard, and it's just a thought, so I wanted to hear, wanted the public to hear that also. yard, and it's just a thought, so I wanted to hear, wanted the public to hear that also, um, because I think it's something that we need to think about, we're growing drastically, and it's only gonna become more expensive to do what we're doing, so, food for thought, think it over, let's, let us know what you think about a fee, or if you like it or don't like it. And that's all I've got.
You need Jeff Ham's number, we'll be glad to give it to you, so you can get him the information, so, just kidding, we'll call this meeting, adjourn with...
I'll put it on the billboard.
Yes, we'll start with the, uh, community service, Bruce, come on up.
Well, that's mine, that's what I wanna hear. Well, I agree, I see, but we got a lot of people out there picking up shovels, so... It's just food for thought.
Sure.
Thank you.
Jeff Ham?
For the lines?
Bruce Thomas.
John Farmer.
Bill Donner. Second? Aye.
Yeah, this is simply a cleanup, it's a, it's an address that we've, uh, this will be the second time we filed a lien in the last eighteen months, uh, and this is for dumpster rental and haul off only, the, uh, area residents have actually done the labor, we're just supplying the dumpsters, but we are billing the, uh, property owners, and it was five twenty-yard dumpsters is what we ended up clean, cleaning up and hauling off, and it made a huge difference in the property, I'm not saying that we're done there, but we're probably done, uh, until, uh, maybe next spring.
Bruce, what was the, uh, cost incurred?
There's a, uh, there's an invoice in your packet, it was, uh, dumpster rental was two thousand fifty dollars and seventy-eight cents, and that was five loads at three hundred and seventy-five dollars plus tax.
Second?
Back in, when the legislature was in session, uh, Representative Jordan Arkansas presented a bill to do away with all, uh, control by local government, uh, in the city, but more importantly in the ETJ, where the one for the city local control did not pass through our legislative body, but the one for the ETJ, it, as of August the fifth, there is no more anything, they won't have to come to DRC, they won't have to, uh, come to our plan and zoning to get permission to do anything they want, so that's, anything outside the city limits is free game, and so we're in the process right now of working with City of Bryant and the county to come up with a solution to help that, because, uh, as it was stated many times during the legislative breakfast, what that does, if you have a house, and we'll just use, uh, a neighborhood like Hurkin Lake Estates, and you go outside the city limits, and you buy ten acres and wanna put a hog farm in, even though you've got a five hundred thousand dollar house, and on the backside of the boundary you buy that ten acres, then you can put a hog farm, or you can put a refinery shop in, anything you want to, because there's nothing or no way to guide them or direct them, uh, it does away with the ETJ altogether, and it comes into effect August the fifth, I do know we have a meet set up next Tuesday at two thirty with Judge Brumley, Mayor Treet, and all the lawyers involved to see what can be done to help with that, because what that does is, it eliminates a lot of annexation, because if they're not within the specifications of our city streets and following the codes which we have in place, there's no way for us to annex them in, and it really cuts down on growth of cities, Slayne County and as far, and the other seventy-four counties in the state, so, that's why that's on here, I want to make everyone aware. I do know who voted yes, and I do know who voted no, to be honest with you. Uh, after the meet, I'll be glad to.